Back to session. Stand for invocation, please.
Let us pray. Family, Father, Father God, we give you the honor and glory of today. We thank you for everything that you have provided for us and that you continue to give us your grace and your mercy, this great community, these great volunteers and workers and service unto your community. We ask on today that you will continue to impart wisdom, knowledge, and understanding in everything you do that we may be able to be prosperous and consider our community, build it up, unify it, and be examples to this nation, in Jesus' name.
Amen. And? Amendment, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the set agenda. Motion. Mr. Curtis, Mr. Rice, show of hands. Thank you.
Do you have singing or singing?
Oh, yeah. I'm messing with this trying to get this.
Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? No comments? Special guest presentation. We do have a business spotlight every month on a business in town, and this month it's Rocky Top Pets. And if you'd like to come on down? Sean, he's in your order. Right to the summit. Board three.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I know I'm saying my... I'm thinking something. I'm thinking over in... That's good.
This is a certificate of excellence presented to Rocky Top Pets. On behalf of the city of Waynesville, we are honored to acknowledge your outstanding service to Waynesville and the surrounding community. Because of your dedication and outstanding customer service, your business had become recognized as the business spotlight for May 2021. Any particular comments about your business?
No, sir. We appreciate you guys.
Well, we appreciate you, Ted.
Wish you could be here with us.
You can share that with her.
Perfect. It's all hers.
Thank you. Boarding commission, Eric Ford, Park Board. The mayor and board. We had five present last Thursday, and we had a very, very good meeting, though. The gardeners were talking about building some new stairs there at the master garden. And so we were kind of excited about that. There's going to be classes that are going to hold. It's the weekend of every month during the formative hours. Under the sports program, the parks, um, we got some kudos. Not necessarily the park board, but the city did. They said that the parks department has been amazing about getting fields back together every time they flood. Something positive like that. And they've got summer practice that will start up on the weekend of 24. And they've got fire out about all that. We do need coaches. Coach or know somebody that would like to be a coach? They're sure to need... That means you're good and focused. Our park superintendent told us that he'll be working on splash pad to get going for Memorial Day and also on the baseball fields. We did have an issue at both Laughlin Park and at Glen Haven Park. They're power washing. Bathroom's being power washing, the walkway needs power washing, so we're going to have to work on that, try to get that done. There's a lot of flooding happens down at Laughlin, and so a lot of residue has been left on the benches, things like that. So we'll be taking that up next couple of months till we get it done. That's all I have. If anybody has any questions, maybe? No questions? Thank you. Planning and zoning. And Councilman Davis is not here, so that guess is tough to make. We called a meeting to order on 5:30. Quark was present. We approved the minutes of April 13th. We did appoint a new chairman and secretary. Mr. Davis nominated while quartering, and I seconded it. And then Mr. Davis graciously volunteered to be the secretary. With no further information, we adjourned at 5:37. Next meeting will be June the 8th at 5:30. Standing committees. Utilities. Councilman Lawson.
Good. Utility committee, we convene on May 4th at 3:30. Councilman Collins, he called a meeting to order at 3:30. He was also, the minutes were approved, he was also nominated as the chair of the utility committee, and that was approved. Also, the 2021 co-op scheduled completion. John Doyle presented to the committee with the 2020 co-op and scheduled completion along with the closing date of 6/03/21. This bill stated that we will, it will go to the finance committee, meeting four approval and meeting to the, moving to the city council on 5/20, which is today, in the bond price and execute the certificate of purchase agreement. Also, we have the Show Me Agreement, the first draft complete, the legal review complete, and the final draft is scheduled to be presented to the city council approval on today as well. Councilman Rice made a motion. That was approved and, of course, it was moved to the city council. Department updates with water. Main thing that was updated by Ms. Edwards was there was a 23 water, three sewer replacements, replaced 10 meters, one new meter installed and repaired two yards. Few of the highlights are working with Benton and Associates on I&amp;I updating the city map and installing French drains in the park in Northern Heights is now online. Electric department. Some of the highlights were they worked on the, on Valley Road, on the bush hogging and clearing up the new substation site. The street department worked on some of the access roads and new employee started and third-year apprentice. So also, we have with the gas department, they relocated some gas lines on a wrong step road due to the exposed gas line while walking the lines of the annual inspection and purchase new electro-fusion machine due to the, to the parts which are, were needed because of recalibration, and these, this is something that's done every year. There was a meeting for closed session. Went to closed session at 4:03. That motion was made by Councilman Rice at 4:32, who came out of closed session and Councilman Collins called the meeting adjourned meeting at 4:32. The next meeting is on June 1st at 3:30 PM. Thank you.
Any questions? We do have a bill, a proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-21. This bill has been a long time in plan, and I'm very proud of all the work Mr. Sheldon, John, and the rest of the team who have done to get this project to this point. Have a reading of the ordinance.
First reading, 2021-21, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Show Me Power Electric Cooperative for electric willing services. Second reading, 2021-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Show Me Power Electric Cooperative for electric willing services.
Thank you. Any questions? A question for John or? Well, I'll call for a motion to approve this. Motion for ordinance.
That's it.
Mr. Wilson, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Barnes?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The passes. Economic development, Mr. Russ.
Yes. Meeting's called to order at 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM. No citizen comments. Motion was made to amend the agenda to elect a new committee chairman. Approved the meeting minutes. Motion was made, motion seconded, passed. Meeting minutes from April 6th updated. New committee chairman was elected. Talked about Bird Scooters. Bird Scooters are a dockless electric micro-mobility vehicle sharing company. The company is, is interested in bringing scooters to Waynesville. Bird's mission is to make cities more livable and bring communities together by providing an affordable, environmentally-friendly transfer transit alternative. Bird can launch and operate at no cost to the city. Riders must be 18 years old with a valid driver's license. Safety is their top priority. Riders are charged $1 to unlock it and $1 per minute. Scooters are capped at 15 miles per hour. New riders must download the Bird app in order to use the scooters. Committee discussed the information that was provided. Mr. Doyle stated that he would be in contact and is hopeful to get Bird started in Waynesville. We went to municipal code update, Title I government provisions. The bill is to update the Title I to municipal code and upload to the city's website, which will add height to the citizens. Once uploaded to the website, we will still be able to make corrections as needed as it's a working document. Motion made to move forward with uploading the city to the city website. Motion seconded, it passed. The business spotlight for May is Rocky Top Pets. For June is Dr. Futter. July is Shelter Insurance. August is Swinson's Auto Body, or Auto Service, excuse me. Special events coming up are Uncommon Brotherhood New Child Goes Hungry event in Waynesville City Park. That will be May 22nd at 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Then the Route 66 Art Gallery is the second Saturday art show. Then May 8th at 9:00 PM to 2:00 PM, or 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM is Shalan's All Dogs Academy. That's in the Waynesville City Park. On May 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Kate State Cruisers. No, it's right there. The dogs is from the 22nd, on May 22nd. Kate State Cruisers coming in July, but to be determined. There was a need for closed session. Committee entered closed session at 5:55 PM. Committee returned to open session, back open at 6:20 PM. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 6:20. The next meeting is scheduled to be held on June 1st at 5:00 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Councilman Rice? Police committee, Mr. Wilson. Councilman Wilson.
All right. So police committee, May 18th was our meeting at 3:30. Everyone was present. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 PM. We did have citizens' comments. It was Kirsten Ellis. She was the director of jury university in Rolla, and she spoke on the Fast Track program that offers financial aid that covers school tuition and fees. This grant addresses workforce needs by helping adults pursue a certificate, degree, or industry recognized credentials in an area designated as high need. She also stated that it is a badge to master's program that anyone who has graduated from the police academy can qualify for. Also, as far as appointment, there was a new appointment to chair committee, which was, motion was made and seconded for myself to chair the police committee. Approval of minutes, it was approved as published. I want, I mean, we also talked about the Bird Scooters, but we just talked about that a little bit ago. I don't have to repeat that. But grant updates, the police department has received a visiting incar camera that will fully reimburse through a grant in the amount of $5,000, a little bit over $5,000. Also, receiving two Stalker Dual Radars that will reimburse through the grant in the amount of $5,848. There were no additional police department updates. Other business, we talked about the storm sirens on, and Mr. Doyle discussed the storm sirens meeting that was held on, held with Bruce Fisher from Blue Valley Public Safety at one time in the city. One time the city had, had received some sirens from Fort Leonard Wood. Those are no longer operational. The city is currently looking to provide the community with new sirens. The storm sirens are not meant to be heard inside homes, but outside, as far as the warning device with the audible of seven decimals, the level. The goal is to obtain rent lines in order to pay for the sirens. One siren costs $20,000, $20,719. The city would like to install a minimum of three. The entire committee was in favor of that. Also, May 13th, there was a debate on the job fair there that we had on the 13th. The job fair was held in St. Robert Community Center on 13th. There was very little attendance. The plan is to hold another job fair towards the end of the summer, and we will publish those details as we do. There was a need for a closed session. Committee entered closed session at 4:14 PM. Committee entered back into open session at 4:55, having no further business. The meeting was adjourned at 4:55. The next meeting is scheduled for June 10th at 3:30 PM here at Waynesville.
Any questions? Rose and Grounds, Councilman Farm.
Okay. Rose and Grounds met on May 6th at 4:00 PM. We welcomed our new council person, Amanda. Mr. Davis couldn't make the meeting that day. First thing we did is after citizens' comments, and there was no one there to talk, so we went to electing the committee chairman, which I got the honors, so. Anyway, from there, we approved the minutes. We also talked about Bird Scooters, and Mr. Doyle kind of gave Ms. Grant an update of what full project could possibly be if we go through with it. Then we had a discussion about the legality of traffic speed bumps, or humps, as some call them. We previously talked to Rose and Grounds Committee about it, about the legality of it, whether we could put it in an arc or roads running into the park. We have found out that they are legal, so that's something that I would imagine will happen very soon. We received our street department updates. The street department assisted Hall Creek gravel within French drains that installed in vehicles on the same park. Painted parking spots at the Farmer's Market and repaired the city's brush over and built it bottoms. And the other day, Saturday, Farmer's Market was packed. I don't think there was a parking space anywhere, so apparently it's working well for them. Depending projects have been discussed, there's snow routes, crosswalks downtown, and the Linda Bridge. And other business, Mr. Doyle talked about North Street, Cobra. They received a phone call to check out by the old police station. And has that been looked at, John?
They are, yeah, they have camera the line. They run our camera in that line. Yes.
And somebody wondering about the parking lot lights by the department motor vehicle. We found that that belongs to a private citizen. It's on his own property. It's not on the city property.
Correct.
Anyway, Mr. Doyle stated with new council members on the Rose and Grounds Committee, we thought that we should move the meeting back to 5:00 PM, but it'd be easier for, to work to view of attendance, since they won't get off about 4:30 PM. We made a motion to change it, and having no further business, we adjourned at 4:47. And the next meeting is scheduled for June 3rd at 5:00 PM.
Any questions for Mr. Farm? Finance and Human Resources Committee, Mr. Davis is not here. Mr. Collins is not here. That leaves Ms...
By default, it's me. So our committee met on May 13th. No citizens' comments. The committee elected Cecil Davis as our chairman, and our minutes were approved. The committee approved paying the bills. We discussed the city's cash flow reports with the expenses tracking at 34% and revenues tracking at 39%. The committee approved updating the city bank accounts to add the new finance chairman, Cecil Davis, as a signature and removing previous chairman Clarence Liberty. Mr. Gaffory and Mr. Spikerman updated the committee on the 2021 certificates of participation, including the schedule of events that we'll have more of this evening. And the committee discussed organization support of sustainable Ozarks partnership with Fort Leonard Wood Institute and Pulaski County Grove Alliance. And Mr. Doyle will be drawing up a plan to review at mid-year budget time in June, so we can add a line item for that. Committee forwarded the Title I code to the city council for final approval and also forwarded the Show Me Power Agreement to city council for final approval. Mr. Doyle updated the committee on the COUSA reimbursement check that we received for 2021 in the amount of $10,000. And the committee reviewed a copy of the survey that was sent to citizens with their utility bills this month and reviewed several that have been completed and submitted back to the city. Those were really good. I recommend that you can see some of the comments that came in. It's worth the time. I think the city's on the right track. I think that's what a lot of them said, for me anyway, on what our mission is. The city participated in the Pulaski County Job Fair at the same time as the committee meeting, and city staff will begin mid-year budget reviews over the next weeks, and budget amendments will be prepared for review at the June finance committee meeting. There was a need for a closed session. We returned to open session, and then the committee was adjourned.
Any questions for Kelsey?
We meet again on the 10th at 5:00 PM if you want to come visit.
We have a number of ordinances for coming out of Human Resources. Bill number 2021-18, reading please.
First reading, 2021-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to the MoGas Pipeline LLC transportation rate agreement for natural gas service fixing in effective date. 2021-18, reading number two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to approve an amendment to the MoGas Pipeline LLC transportation rate agreement for natural gas service fixing in effective date.
Floor is open for discussion. John, would you like to explain it to those who are watching tonight?
Okay, sure. So this, this proposed ordinance would lower our reservation rate by roughly $1.97 is what it, what it turns out it would lower the reservation rate, 97 cents per decotherm. We equate it to roughly $13,000 in year savings for the city and the citizens or the utility users of that system.
Further questions? I call for a motion to approve. So may I, Mr. Farm? Mr. Rice, second. Roll call.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The passes. Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-19, reading please.
2021-19, an ordinance amending Title I of the municipal code of the city of Waynesville regarding government provisions and approving the 2021 codification of ordinances fixing in effective date. 2021-19, an ordinance amending Title I of the municipal code of the city of Waynesville regarding government provisions and approving the 2021 codification of ordinances fixing in effective date.
Thank you. Any discussion? I will tell you that our city clerk, Michelle Brown, has put an amount, a great amount of work into this, and we're excited to get most of this to be going online so people can see what we're doing.
With that being said, Mayor, this is a working document.
That's right.
So we don't want to forget that.
Roll call?
Yeah, motion. I'll make sure.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion, amendment? Second. Mr. Farm, roll call.
Councilman Farm?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Corin?
Yes. Yes.
The passes. We have a proposed resolution. Reading please.
Resolution of the city of Waynesville to support a letter of intent with Hyland LLC to purchase the industrial parts cycle building.
Open for discussion.
I have a long time to motion.
Go ahead and sell it to them. Yes, sir. Okay. Call for a motion approved.
I'll make a motion.
Amendment, second. Mr. Wilson, roll call vote.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman... Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson? Councilman Farm?
Sir.
I'm just looking.
We move to fast voice. This is what we've been waiting for.
Yes.
Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-20, reading please.
2021-20, authorizing the city of Waynesville Missouri to enter into a lease purchase transaction, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of certain projects and prepay an outstanding lease obligations of the city, and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second reading, authorizing the city of Waynesville, Missouri to enter into a lease purchase transaction, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of certain projects and prepay an outstanding lease obligations of the city, and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
Open for discussion. John, again, could you touch on this for our viewers?
So over the years, in the city of Waynesville, we utilize COP, Certificate of Participation, to allow our city, or allow the city of Waynesville to, you know, continue projects that they, they want to achieve. And I don't know, the last one we really did, we purchased some water systems. We installed some water tanks. We, we had a lot of projects that we completed, and as these certificates are paid off over time or throughout time, you know, we, we like to renew them because we have more projects. We are constantly moving forward progressively, and the COP is no different than the ones that we have realized in the past. that we have realized in the past, and we're looking at, you know, putting this forward, uh, in projects within our city. We would like to expand our, um, uh, utilities. Um, we'd like to encourage development, so we have a lot of good projects packed into this C O P that are proposed, and, um, like I said, it's just, uh, it's just a way for the city to continue pushing forward in their, in their goals and their, um, you know, the objectives they, they want to conclude in.
And this is another project we had a lot of people working very hard on.
This is, um, this has been a long time. This is probably nearly a year of work in just this C O P, uh, maybe more. I know it went back, um, Bruce was here working on it, and Bruce retired June nineteenth, so, uh, it's been a long time and a lot of work.
Call for a motion approved. Motion. Mr. Curtis?
Second.
Mr. Rice? Roll call.
Councilman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Corin, there. Thank you.
It passes. Thank you all very much. Waynesville St. Robert Airport, Mr. Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at three P M. Minutes were approved. The board approved the budget. Fuel sales, fuels, sales are up. By the end of the month, fuel sales will increase due to additional flights coming in the airport. Contour Airline update, Matt Shabed, is that how you say it?
Chafus.
Chafus. Uh, gave us presentation on Contour, about what they offer, and they are currently tracking a hundred more bookings for May so far. Extension date for the E A S bidding, that's the Essential Air Service. The Fort Lenawood access to Contour passenger, no update on that as of yet. S O P marketing report, Google Ads have, have improved, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Summary showed an increase in post engagement. Other business, Missouri Partnership sent R F I, which is request for information for an upcoming project for a company that performs maintenance, repair, and operations on large aircraft, as well as full range of additional support services. This is a well-established company looking to build a new operational facility. This company expects to initially bring eight hundred, eight eighty, to one hundred aircraft field maintenance jobs to the area with potential growth within a short timeframe. The information then was requested, was sent back to the Missouri Partnership. All categories were met, and this could be a great opportunity for our area. Next meeting, Tuesday, May twenty fifth, three P M, at Waynesville City Hall. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at four fourteen P M.
Any questions for Mr. Liberty? Other business?
We have no other business here.
Well, great. This is the city administrative report.
Yes. Um, so, the city administrative report, uh, I'm just going to key in on one thing. We talked about, you know, the C O P and the, and the hours, weeks, months, and years that this team, and I, I don't think anybody individually can take credit for all the effort that they've put forward, um, so I don't want that to be overlooked by anybody. Um, the C O P, the Show Me Agreement, all these things are massive steps in a positive direction by the council and by the city. Okay? Um, but one thing, Amanda touched on this as well in her report, was the, um, surveys, and I think of the engineering report, or the administrator's report, something I really was going to key on because the other stuff we went over was, was the results of those surveys, and it is, it's, um, so you start in, you know, thinking that, you know, the direction people want, and when you actually hold those people, you see that some things that you've overlooked, and you need to back up and realize, hey, look, they're interested in sidewalks, they're interested in, you know, this or that, whatever it may be. And so, when, when we got these in, they're, they're entertaining, they are, they're intriguing to me, um, and you can't stop reading. There's, there's a lot of good information there. So, for the benefit of the council and the committees, we will be, um, providing the results of these surveys to you guys. Um, we will do this in a orderly fashion, as there's a huge stack, we're not going to make it go through one by one, we're going to actually compile it into a report that is, um, you know, has statistics and things like that on it and, and other things, but they are, um, there's, there's a lot of value there to our knowledge, the first time the city's ever been surveyed. I don't know that we've ever sent out a survey to our residents to ask them what they believe our service and our quality is. So, um, pretty, pretty excited about the results that we've seen, and like I said, take the time to read them for what's in them, because where I personally think we were wanting to move ahead, you need to back up and, and read these things. There, there's a lot of information there, and it's exciting.
That is it?
That's all I want to touch on.
Council comments? Let's go. Mr. Farnum?
Well, I would like to say to the class of twenty twenty one, it was a tough year for you, but you made it. Maybe now you can throw your masks away and get out in the sunshine and fresh air. And to all the other schools in our area, I wish all those graduating seniors good luck and future endeavors.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Oh, I'm sorry. No wrong.
All right, I just have, uh, a couple of things, and I, I also caveat with Mr. Farnum about the graduates is a great year. Um, next year will be even better because my girl graduates. But, uh, but what I have is, um, Woodland Hills is doing a, this is going to be the beginning of June, uh, June, June fifth and sixth, we're doing a community yard sale. So, there's, there's several people within that community that have came together and decided that we're going to do a yard sale. Uh, some people even said they were going to have cars out there, some big ticket items, maybe a plane, just come out, um, there and, and buy up some stuff for a good reasonable price, um, also continue to be safe out. Um, there's a lot of snakes moving around, um, just be mindful of that thing. And also, um, if you have an heathen behind your property or grass that looks like it needs to be cut and nobody's doing it, you probably need to be the one cutting it, uh, because it's like all over the place. We need to make sure that the community still stays presentable, um, and let's just start to work together to get that done as time.
Mr. Curtis?
Uh, John Doyle was talking about those surveys, and councilmen, don't take this the wrong way, but we're not the smartest people ever. And by saying that, what I'm saying is, I don't see any, anybody here at the council from our city. This is the place you come and tell us what you think about our city, positive and negative, but we want to hear what you have to say so that we can make the right decisions. When I became a councilman, the best advice I got was do your homework and make the best decision you can with the information you have. We need your information. That's all.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, I just want to thank, uh, Chief Cordova. I'm no longer on your committee. Kind of miss you. You're doing a great job. You have a great staff. Good seeing you.
Mr. Liberty?
Thank you to all the city employees and Mr. Doyle and the staff, uh, and also congratulations to all the graduates.
Score.
So, I have a big, huge thank you to the staff, because, I mean, obviously, it's my first one. I've been sitting in all of my first committees, and everybody has been so extremely helpful and wonderful, and I could not ask for a better team of people. So, thank you for all you do. Thank you for preparing us, uh, for providing us knowledge, and, um, I'm looking forward to the next two years with you all. Thank you.
The City of Waynesville wishes to acknowledge all the graduating seniors of Pulaski County as they begin their new direction in life. This is a very important milestone in their life, and we wish all of them the very best. Return.
Yes, sir.